All right, I believe I got the green light that everything is ready to go. Beef first, welcome everybody. Today is May 18th, 2021. It is 9:00 AM. We will be starting a regular meeting for the Lake County Board of Supervisors. I just want to ask all supervisors today if we can make sure to speak into our microphone and state our names so that people are aware of who is speaking. It gets a little difficult with the muffled sound coming through the mask. And so if we can go ahead and do that, that would be great. So let's go ahead and get started on our agenda and have a moment of silence. And I apologize, I wasn't ready for that. I have one from Supervisor Crandall, who was not able to be here. This is a moment of silence for Aleah Hicks. Recently passed Thursday in Lucerne at age 11 years of age. Aleah attended school as a sixth grader at Lucerne Elementary, and her parents are Steve Hicks and Charlene Duncan, sibling to Stephen Hicks Jr. Aleah's favorite pastimes were any common youth activities, but mostly conducting TikTok videos while hanging out and at Lucerne, at the Lucerne Castle. Aleah was always part of Shake Head Dance, our cultural dance, as she is a member of the Robinson Rancheria Tribe and will be deeply missed by the community, her tribe, and with who we offer our greatest condolences to her family. And obviously taken way too soon from all of us here in our communities. Supervisor Scott, would you please lead us in the pledge allegiance?
Yes. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, thank you very much. Are there any extra items not appearing on the posted agenda from board members or staff? Hearing none, let's go ahead and move on to item number five, approval of the consent agenda. Are there any items that board members wish to pull for further discussion? So I am going to ask that we pull item 5.2 and 5.7 for further discussion. And let's go ahead and open it up to the public. Is there anybody from the public that wishes to pull an item from the consent agenda? And seeing none here in the boardroom, are there anyone, any people from the public that wish to pull an item in a Zoom room? Again, press the button at the bottom of your screen to raise your hand, or dial *9 if you're in our meeting via telephone. Seeing none, let's go ahead and bring it back to the board for action on the items not being pulled.
Mr. Chair, Supervisor Simon, I'd like to make a motion to approve consent agenda items 5.1, 5.3 through 5.6.
Second.
I have a motion from Supervisor Simon and a second by Supervisor Scott. Johanna, roll call, please.
Okay, Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Supervisor Crandall's absent, correct?
Correct.
Okay, Supervisor Scott?
Aye.
Supervisor Paeska?
Yes.
And Supervisor Sabatia?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Let's go ahead and take up item 5.2, since we're not ready for a timed item. 5.2 is adopt resolution authorizing the standard agreement between the County of Lake and the Mental Health Services Oversight and Accountability Commission for the period beginning upon contract execution through March 31st, 2025, and authorize the behavioral health services director to sign the standard agreement and grant award claim form. Everything about this item is amazing. There's $2 million that we are able to obtain from the state of California to help enhance our services. There was one little caveat, and I spoke with our county council, who suggested we go ahead and bring this to the public. It has Supervisor Simon's name as the signature, and just wanted to make that change to be the current chair member, uh, chair members named for signature on that document. And it can be found in the, I believe in the standard agreement is where I found that error. And the standard agreement didn't seem to open very well. You have to actually download it and open it in Adobe Acrobat, um, if you're looking at it through our website. So that was the only change I was looking for. Let me check in to see if Director Metcalf is here. He is in the Zoom room. If he has any comments on this item. As I stated, everything else about this item looks and sounds amazing.
Yes, Mr. Chair, thank you. This is Todd Metcalf, Director of Behavioral Services. Yes, I believe that when we applied for this grant, it went back a little ways, and that was when Supervisor Simon was the board chair. So that explains the error, and it's just taken a while to get to the board. So other than that, yeah, this is exciting, and we hope to come back maybe in a year or so and report out on the progress of the grant.
Thank you very much. Any comments from the board on this item? Okay, let's go ahead and open it up to the public. Any comments from the public on this item? And seeing none, let's go ahead and bring it back to the board for action.
So, oh, you're gonna do it? Go ahead.
I offer the resolution.
The resolution has been offered. Johanna, roll call, please.
Okay, Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Supervisor Scott?
Aye.
Supervisor Paeska?
Yes.
And Supervisor Sabatia?
Aye.
Thank you.
And the resolution was offered by Supervisor Scott. Okay, it is 9:07 AM. Let's go ahead and open up our public input, our 9:05 AM item. If there is any input from the public that is not related to any items on our agenda, please go ahead and stand up. You have three minutes, and we have somebody here in the room. And again, if you're in the Zoom room, raise your hand, and we'll call on you when it is your turn.
Hi.
Good morning, Sheriff.
I'm Justin Quayle. I'm coming to talk to you about the early activation of cannabis. There's some people that have been kind of misplaced or not. I don't know, I have many disabilities, so I'm trying to explain it to you the best way I can. But we started in 2018. We did everything, it took us until to get everything, our property up to what you guys' standards, so we could get the early activation started. We did everything that they asked, but because I think we were in a evacuation zone for three years in a row, we weren't even allowed to be up on our property. We were kind of overlooked. We paid to be in the early activation program, and we have not had any follow-up. We did put in these folders, and there's people I'm sure, like me, that have paid to be in a program that they're not going to be able to be in, because the paperwork is not getting done proficiently. And the lady said in an email, she's overworked. She has 45 cases, and she's way overworked, and things are going to get overlooked when people are overworked. So I'm wondering how you guys are making sure that people that have paid and done everything they're supposed to do, because you guys have, you know, people that aren't overworked, can't do their job and get to people like us that are way out there in the middle of nowhere. And I think that that needs to be re-looked over, especially if people have paid and they're not being followed up, the people are not going into the folders to make sure they're mailing the right paperwork to people, or even mailing it to the right address. If they don't open the folder, then they don't know. And they just start sending random letters to neighbors and other people to tell us to stop and desist and to get these certain paperwork done that was already done in the folder, but they never opened the folder. So I'm, I'm, I have many disabilities, and my mom worked for this county until 1998. She was working for Child Protective Services, and she had extreme workload. And there were, it's, computers nowadays and everything, we shouldn't have that hardship. There should be people that pay to be in programs, and the board should be able to supply extra workers if those workers can't get to those people that have paid to be in a program. That's all I really had to say. I don't know where to go, or how to do it, or get it out there, but with all my disabilities, I can't just read something, I have to pay someone to read it for me. So it's very confusing, especially when you have workers that work for you guys and for us, that just get angry and say that they're overworked, and they can't get to us. I, I, I don't, I don't think that's fair, because we're trying hard, we're about to lose our land if we can't get the business up and running, and we're trying to be compliant and not be like the black market and, and keep doing what we used to do. You know, we've been busted year after year, and we stopped because of this new program, and we can't even get into it.
And Mr. Quayle, your three minutes are up. If you have one final comment you wish to just make, just a final point?
Oh, thank you for letting me be here.
Thank you very much. And I would suggest, please reach out to your supervisor or reach out to CDD.
I did, he says he's overworked too, so it's kind of like I gotta speak up more, I guess.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you for coming. Any further comments here in the boardroom before we move on to the Zoom room? All right, let's go ahead and go to the Zoom room. If we can please unmute Will Tuttle.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Oh, thank you, thank you very much, board members. And yeah, I'd like to raise the issue again, which I think is the biggest issue facing not only Lake County, but probably our state, our country, and the world, which is how we respond to this apparent pandemic and here at the county level. And again, to really urge you to please do your homework on this issue outside of the mainstream narrative that we're getting through the mainstream media, because right now we're at a point where, according to VAERS, which is the Vaccine Adverse Event Reporting System, which was instituted back in, in 1986, when they passed the law, allow that, that takes away all liability from the pharmaceutical industry. So according to studies by Harvard and other universities, only 1%, the most 10%, many people say it's less than 1% are actually reported. Right now, according to VAERS, 30 people are dying per day on average since the beginning of the year from this vaccine, which translates to probably at least 300, probably closer to 3,000 people a day are dying immediately, I mean, within a few weeks or a month from this vaccine. And tens of thousands are seriously injured, are being seriously injured. This is being reported to VAERS, it's being not, it's not covered by the mainstream media. So this is a very dangerous, completely experimental drug that you folks unfortunately are encouraging, I think at the advice of the health directors. And I think it's important, you know, what I'm saying, last time, there was some comments that I'm just giving my opinions. These are not opinions, these are facts that are being deliberately suppressed in the mainstream media. I was born and raised in a newspaper family in Massachusetts, and I understand very well that media like newspapers, radio, television are supported by advertisers, and they will not give news, because we didn't do it. You don't give news that the advertisers will be objecting to. The biggest advertisers in the world now are the pharmaceutical industry, and they have captured the mainstream media, and they've also captured the medical system and the AMA and the educational system. So people like Doc, you know, the health directors that we have, Dr. Bloom and Pace and so forth, have gone through the training. I mean, I have a PhD, a doctorate, I know what it's like to be wounded by going through these, this education system where you have to think the way they want you to think. And so they're, they are not going to do anything but give the party line of the pharmaceutical industry. And so it's really up to you, please, to question this, because they have to. If they don't give the party line from the pharmaceutical industry, from, through their education, they've been programmed to just, the vaccines are good, and they're safe and effective, but the evidence is the contrary of that.
Your three minutes are up, if you can give us your final comment?
Thank you very much. I just want to thank you for, please, doing your homework and protecting the people of Lake County from a very dangerous situation. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comment. And I see no further hands up, and no one in the boardroom, so let's go ahead and close public.
I'm, I'm sorry to interrupt, but could you say out loud how to unmute if you're on a phone?
Yes, you dial *9, and I believe, thank you very much for that, Johanna. I have phone 6205 with a hand up. We can get him unmuted?
Good morning. Can you hear me? Good morning.
Yes, we can hear you. Good morning.
Thanks so much. I really think it's important that we all hear the first public speaker with his experience with the program that he's trying to get through with the county staff and what his experience is. And I'd like to ask again for the board to please look at, for instance, in the planning department, where in 2015, seven people were able to process 25 permits in a year. Now, an understaffed department of maybe three new workers, maybe two older workers, no head, is being asked to process 300 permits. This is a serious matter, and when you ask for Division 2028, the vision I have for 2021 and 2022, is that our county be properly staffed so that it can operate as it's meant to, to be smooth and serve itself and serve the public. So I hope you'll take this matter seriously and look into what are the proper staff levels for the most important departments, and please regard this as a matter of urgency.
Thank you for your comment.
Thank you.
And I believe that is the end of public comment. I see no hands up in the Zoom room and no one else in the board chambers, so we'll go ahead and close down public item and, or the public input and move on to 6.2 or 9:06 AM item, presentation of proclamation designating the week of May 22nd through May 28th, 2021 as National Safe Boating Week in Lake County. Sheriff Martin?
Good morning. Okay. The Board of Supervisors, County of Lake, State of California, proclamation designates the week of May 22nd through May 28th, 2021, as National Safe Boating Week in Lake County. Whereas in 2019, 613 people died in boating-related accidents in the United States, 439 of these fatalities were due to drowning, and 362 of these boaters would be alive today had they worn their life jackets. And whereas contributing factors in fatal accidents were operator inattention, inexperience, excessive speed, and machine failure, use of alcohol was the leading contributing factor with 113 fatalities. And whereas, where instruction was known, 70% of deaths occurred on boats where the operator did not receive boating safety instructions, and only 20% of deaths occurred on vessels where the operator had received an approved boating safety education certificate. And whereas, the summer months of June, July, and August are the most active boating months, with 308 of nationwide fatal boating accidents occurring in these months. And whereas, as the COVID-19 restrictions are lifted, Flotilla 88 of Lake County will continue its efforts to educate the boating public by offering boating classes, free vessel examinations, encourage the public to practice safe boating habits, and wear your life jackets. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Supervisors of the County of Lake does hereby designate the week of May 22nd through May 28th, 2021, as National Safe Boating Week in Lake County, and urges all users of Clear Lake, Lake Pillsbury, Blue Lakes, and Indian Valley Reservoir to safeguard their lives by wearing life jackets when boating, exercising, safe boating practices, and boat responsibly, wear your life jacket. Passed and adopted this 18th day of May 2021. So thank you for the opportunity to come up here. With the drought, I think we add an extra mix into the, an extra element into this mixture. I have with me today Sergeant Andy Davidson. Sergeant Davidson's a lifelong resident of Lake County, having graduated from Clear Lake High School, and he's in charge of our Marine Services Unit, and he's going to talk about some of the extra considerations that are, that we need to be mindful of this year while out boating on Clear Lake.
Thank you, Sheriff. Like you said, my name's Andy Davidson, I'm a sergeant with the Sheriff's Department. I've been out doing the marine patrol now for the last five and a half years. This year's going to be one of the most dangerous years because of our water level. The water level is extremely low. We use the Rumsey level out on the lake, and today we're at .65. To put that perspective, a full lake is about 7.56. Last summer, we started our summer at 4.3, and that was extremely low. At the end of the summer, by the time we were done, we were at point, half a foot below, or half foot above Rumsey level. So we're almost there right now with our starting levels. Because of that, we're going to have a lot of trouble with rocks, people hitting rocks, and sandbars. Rodman Slough is one of our big issues right now. Rodman Slough is extremely shallow, and if you don't know how to get into Rodman Slough, you're going to hit a sandbar. Off the State Park is the same thing. Off of Rocky Point area, we have a lot of rocks, obviously we have buoys out there, but there's a lot of rocks out past the buoys that are now starting to be an issue. They're still underwater, three, four feet underwater, but as it keeps dropping, they're going to be a real issue for us. We're marking these areas with water resources the quickest we can, but there's a lot of stuff out there that I haven't seen before that's starting to pop out. So the main thing is go slow, stay away from the shorelines, know where you're going if you're going to be out there skiing and doing different things. If you need to, call the Sheriff's Department or Water Resources, ask for areas that are the best, stay out as deep water as you can, and go slow.
Thank you, Sergeant Davidson.
Thank you. Anything from the board?
Any comments or questions?
No, just heed those warnings and wear your life jacket. It's, it's very simple. And I, and I believe we have many events in this community that give those away for free, so look for those.
Thank you.
And I do know that from the conversations we've had with water purveyors and others that very soon, many of the docks used by our tournaments will no longer be available, and so that might reduce the activities a little bit in the lake. But I also know from the region I live in that on the way into Cache Creek, it gets very, very shallow over there, too. And you never know what's underneath until you, until you touch it. It could be a tree, it could be another boat, for all we know, I, we have no idea.
There's boats out there.
A lot of them.
So thank you very much, and hopefully everybody stays safe.
Thank you.
All right, it is 9:22. Let's go ahead and go to item 5.7. Approve Letter of Support to the Senate Budget and Fiscal Review Sub Number Three and Assembly Budget Sub Number One, California State General Fund Request from the County Welfare Directors Association, who is cosponsoring a budget request with Children Now to invest $50 million state funds in year one and $100 million ongoing to support statewide implementation of the Prevention Services Provisions of the Family First Prevention Services Act for Child Welfare, Child Welfare Services, and authorize the chair to sign. So everything within the memo and everything within what I just read sounds great, I already want to support it, but unfortunately, we didn't have the letter attached to the item, and so we're going to read the letter, since no one from the public or the board has seen it, that way we all see it simultaneously at the same time. And I'm going to go ahead and pass this on to CAO Hutchinson to go ahead and read through the letter if possible.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I'm also doing a share screen, so it's up on your screen. We will correct the date on this letter and put it on board letterhead and fix it up for the chair to sign. I apologize that it wasn't attached to the agenda. So this letter is directed to Senator Talamante Seegman, who is the Chair of Senate Budget and Fiscal Review Subcommittee Number Three, and also to Joaquin Arambula, Assembly Member, who is the Chair of the Assembly Budget Subcommittee Number One. And the subject matter is child welfare services, support $50 million state general fund investment in prevention services. So, dear Honorable Assembly Member and Senator, the County of Lake respectfully requests your support for a $50 million state general fund investment in the 2021 fiscal year and 100 million in subsequent years to strengthen families, protect children from abuse and neglect, and prevent entries into the foster care system. The investment will enable counties to draw down up to 50 to 100 million annual matching funds, to invest in direct services and supports to help keep families together and reduce the disproportionality faced by children and families of color in the child welfare system. Child welfare agencies have made significant strides to improve child and family outcomes in recent years, including reducing the number of children entering foster care, increasing reunification, adoption, and guardianship rates for foster children, and reducing the number of foster children in congregate care. While our efforts in recent years have shown improvements, the focus of these efforts, such as the recent continuum of care reform, have been with children and families once in the foster care system. We know that more can and must be done to prevent child abuse and neglect by strengthening families and community, communities, and reduce entries into the foster care system. Recent federal legislation, the Family First Prevention Services Act of 2018, provides states with the opportunity to invest in federal funding, invest federal funding into direct services to strengthen and maintain families and prevent entry into foster care. The Act provides federal matching funding to deliver evidence-based practices, programs, including in-home parenting skills, mental health, and substance abuse to parents and pregnant and fostering, parenting foster youth. Although the Act has some limitations, overall, it provides an important opportunity to leverage federal funding with other local and state funding and resources to build a full array of prevention services that are locally tailored to meet the unique needs of families and communities. Prevention efforts are critically important to reduce disparities in the child welfare system for communities of color, specifically for Black and Native American families who are disproportionately represented in the child welfare system. FFPSA requires a 50% match to stand up evidence-based programs and ensure model fidelity in implementation. For any promising practices that may be more reflective of the cultural needs of our communities, states and counties must also commit to rigorous evaluation of those services. Unfortunately, counties are currently stretched thin and unable to stand up new prevention services due to the required match requirements. The Child Welfare Program was realigned under 2011 realignment, and this funding supports mandated activities for children, youth, and families in the foster care system. This is a very limited amount of funding dedicated to direct and/or prevention-oriented services. The Family First Transition Act of 2019 provides California counties with just under $50 million over five years to support FFPSA implementation, but this funding will be insufficient to establish prevention programs in all 58 counties in California. Lake County has taken important steps toward prevention and early intervention, and FFPSA would help our county move our prevention vision forward. The Children's Council began working with Strategies 2.0 in 2018. Through this partnership, a work group was formed, and the participants from private and public agencies created a vision for Lake County. It was decided that it was time to adopt a countywide strategy that shifted our focus from abuse prevention to acknowledging and building community strengths. The work group became known as Resilient Lake County. Resilient Lake County would be able to use all these funds to begin a program in local communities to strengthen family well-being for more families. If Resilient Lake County can empower more families to become healthier, then we will impact our community outcomes and prevent child abuse and neglect in Lake County. This requested investment will support county prevention efforts to keep families together through direct services and supports in partnership with other public and private service providers. This will reduce risk of future child maltreatment, strengthen families, and begin to address disparities that currently exist in the child welfare system for children, youth, and families of color. For these reasons, Lake County urges your support sincerely, and we'll insert there Chairman Sabatia on behalf of the board.
Thank you for reading that, appreciate that. Any comments or questions from the board?
Just that I definitely support this letter, and we know the prevention services work, and we know the prevention services are cheaper to do the work at the front end than wait for the children to actually end up in the foster care system. So I was definitely in support of this.
Couldn't agree more, prevention. And let's see if we have any comments from the public in our Zoom room. We did have a hand up earlier, I don't see one. Okay, it looks like that, wait, we're back. like that, wait, we're back. And phone six two zero five, if we can get you unmuted and please give us your first and last name.
Hi, I'm sorry if this is out of order, but did you open for public comment the sheriff's segment about the dangers on the lake?
I did not, since that was simply a proclamation presentation. I, at this moment in time, we are on the item five point seven about the letter of support to the state for funding for social services.
Thank you.
Let's see, we have Julie Colfax. If we can get you unmuted.
Hello, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Awesome. Thank you. This is Julie Colfax. I'm the current Chair of your Mental Health Advisory Board, but speaking as a marriage and family therapist today, I would like to say that this is a wonderful step forward. I strongly support this letter. It's a wonderful step toward prevention. As we all know, prevention, you know, an ounce of prevention is worth a pound of cure and this can make a gigantic health in the future for mental health in our community as well. The more we work to prevent abuse and support our families, the more we support our parents in our community, the more we reduce the likelihood of intensive and serious mental health issues in the future as well. So thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Any further comments from the public? All right. And again, thank you for both staff and CAO Hutchinson for gathering that letter for us so that we can go ahead and move this forward. This is an important program in my opinion, and important for us to be able to continue efficiently and move this forward. So let's go ahead and bring it back to the board for action.
Mr. Chair, I'll move to approve the letter of support to the Senate Budget and Fiscal Review Sub Number Three and Assembly Budget Sub Number One, California State General Fund Request from the County Welfare Directors Association, CWDA, who is co-sponsoring a budget request for the children, with children now to invest fifty million dollars state funds in year one and a hundred million dollars ongoing to support statewide implementation of the Prevention Services Provision of the Family First Prevention Services Act, FFPSA, for Child Welfare Services and authorize the Chair to sign.
Second.
We have a motion from Supervisor Simon and a second from Supervisor Scott. Johanna, roll call please.
Okay Supervisor Simon.
Yes.
Supervisor Scott.
Aye.
Supervisor Pisca.
Yes.
And Supervisor Sabatier.
Aye.
Thank you.
And since we have a little time, I wanted to check with the board if you don't mind my reopening six point two, since we had a public comment and I did not open public comment. Are you okay with that?
Yes.
Okay, let's go ahead and reopen that item. Since we didn't have a vote or anything, I don't think we need to take action to reopen it. I'm looking at County Council for guidance.
I think you can do a white consensus.
Okay, looks like we got consensus. Thank you very much. And then let's go back and phone six two zero five. I'm, I apologize, I forgot your name, but if you had a comment on item six point two, now is your chance.
Thank you very, very much. This week on KPFC Radio, Terry Knight has a regular program all about the lake. And I had listened to the Board of Supervisors meeting previously and had heard the sheriff talk about the upcoming concerns about the low levels of the lake and boating. And I asked Mr. Knight how he was getting information to give to the public about the warnings that we're hearing about the low water levels in the lake and especially because he spoke mostly about the hundreds of people coming here for fishing tournaments. And he said that there was no link between the Board of Supervisors, what the sheriff was saying, and people like him. And I became concerned, how will people hear about these dangers on the lake?
So I don't have the exact overall answer, but there are press releases that have been put out. And I'm fairly certain that those that are getting permits to do tournaments are being told about the status of our lake. They're very aware of our lake. And I'm certain that we possibly could do other things to make sure that everybody is aware of what's going on. But I do know that we have been putting out press releases, having these conversations here and, and actually preparing for the declaration that we made last week as well. It didn't just pop up last week out of a thin air. There's been a lot of conversations. So that's the best that I can respond at this moment in time unless there's another response elsewhere. And what, what I can say is we, we will continue to put press releases as things move forward. And I do see Director Deleon is here to save me.
Well, I don't know about saving you, Sheriff Sabatier. I'll do my best though. I, I don't, I'd be willing to suggest that the Water Resources website, we can, we can certainly put some information and links to the presentations that we've made. We can, we can put those on our website and we'll be happy to do that. We also, on our Facebook page, we can, we can advertise that information on, on our Facebook page as well. So we'll use social media through Water Resources to get that additional information out to the public.
Thank you very much, Director Deleon. Okay, and then let's go ahead and while we're at it, any further public comment on item six point two before we close it? And seeing none, let's go ahead and move on. So it is nine thirty-seven. Our next item is at nine forty-five. I'm going to ask that we go ahead and start our weekly calendars. And since I know that Senator McGuire's time is always limited, as soon as we have nine forty-five and he's here with us, we're going to pause on our calendars and then we can come back to it if we're not done by then. But let's go ahead and get started on item seven point one, and we'll start with Supervisor Simon.
So board meeting this morning, you know, depending what the timing is today, I know we have the Community Mitigation Assessment Team here with CMAT going on. I think there's something, the SWAT at twelve thirty to two thirty. If there's any time, we'll try and jump on that. And then later on this afternoon, have the meeting with Carol and Jessica to talk about CDD later on this afternoon. And then later on this evening, a end of the day check-in again with our CMAT team for the Risk Reduction Authority. Tomorrow have LAFCO in the morning. And then, like we said, for the next, until the twenty-seventh, there will always be a CMAT meeting or something happening over the next couple of weeks. Thursday, State Board of Fire Services, our second quarter meeting. Friday morning, the drought emergency, first thing in the morning at eight AM with all stakeholders with OES. And Santos, Adventist Health at eleven AM on Friday also. And then coming back on Monday, a meeting with Carol. And we'll once again be most likely having meetings all week long in the evening for debriefings as we have our Community Mitigation Assessment Team here assisting Lake County as we move forward with the Risk Reduction Authority.
Thank you very much. Let's go with Supervisor Pisca.
So a couple of things to report. As Supervisor Simon mentioned, our CMAT is underway. Yesterday, we had our kickoff and today is a several hour long SWAT analysis where all the partners and stakeholders are going to be talking about our strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats. And then their, the team is going to move into daily interviews with all the partners and stakeholders over the next week and a half. And then we'll be wrapping up next week. So each evening Supervisor Simon and I will be meeting with the team and recapping the day. So it's very exciting. Again, this is the first CMAT that's been in California and the entire team is really excited to be here virtually. So last week, we had two Fire Safe Council meetings. One was the regular Fire Safe Council meeting and then there was a, a subcommittee meeting. And we are continuing to work on how we want the Fire Safe Council to be organized. Currently, it is an ad hoc committee under the Board of Supervisors that was created in two thousand nine. And then, as we all know, an ad hoc committee can't, can't exist that long. An ad hoc committee is something that's created and then meant to end. The consensus is that the Fire Safe Council needs to stand on its own and be its own entity. And I'm hoping that it'll be some sort of nonprofit so that we can channel funding through the county. And this will be the, it will be, if we look at the hierarchy, Risk Reduction looks at all risks for our county. Fire Safe Council will be directly under the Risk Reduction, but will focus on community programs throughout our county. So we can look at fuels reduction, we can look at community mitigation, we can look at shipping programs, all of those things that we know will work will, will be housed in the Fire Safe Council. So right now, there isn't even actually a council. We have a paid coordinator through the RCD, which the money comes from the county into the RCD and then pays for that coordinator. So we're, you know, we're already in a great spot because we have staff and we have a really wonderful person, Lori Hutchinson, who's a retired firefighter. So she's been the paid coordinator of the Fire Safe Council for a few years now. So as the CWPP is updated with the RCD, we're going to figure out, you know, where those responsibilities lie. We're hoping, oh, that is one of the priorities of the CMAT, is to help us organize all of these pieces that we've had for a long time, but we haven't really had the structure, the capacity, then you identify the priorities and the responsibilities. So that's kind of the work that we've been doing over the past several months. That's why we brought CMAT in. And at the end of next week, they're going to present us with a, a report of recommendations. And then they'll be following up with us and be supportive over the coming years on how we, we act on those. So it's a great opportunity for us to be working on that right now. And as we saw in Senator McGuire's Town Hall yesterday, there's a lot of funding opportunities. And one of the things that he kept mentioning was Fire Safe Councils. So currently, our Fire Safe Council can't hold funds because it's technically under the county. So this is just one of the steps that we need to do to, to make sure that we can take advantage of all the opportunities that are available to us. I also got a tour of the Conocti lookout tower and I made it to the top on a really windy day. So I am grateful for Chris Rivera for inviting, inviting me. And I brought my son. And so we got to enjoy one of the greatest views in the county. So those are my reports for the week. I, today, I do have the meeting with Supervisor Simon and CAO Hutchinson to talk about CDD. We're having our evening meeting with the CMAT debriefing. Tomorrow, I'm going out on the lake to tag along with sampling. So I'm really excited about that. Then I'm going to have my CMAT interview in the afternoon, cavern check-in with the radio network now that we're technically in fire season. It's important to do that practice. Thursday, I have a meeting with Director Ewing about a parks opportunity. He's going to be presenting at the Club Area Council in the evening. So we're having our pre-meeting for that. Friday, for now, it's just the CMAT. I think I have a call at eleven, but I forgot to put it in my calendar. CMAT through the weekend. Monday, I have my meeting with CAO Hutchinson. And then the Club Area Council is considering the, the Blackberry Cobbler Festival. So I think a decision's going to be made on that on Monday evening. And so I will be supporting that however that goes and likely spending my summer working on that festival.
I'm, I'm considering a Blackberry Cobbler myself right now. Sounds delicious. Thank you very much for your report and your calendar. And let's go ahead and go to Supervisor Scott.
I will be fast because I know it's nine forty-five. Tomorrow, I have meetings with constituents in the morning. I have an ACT meeting in the afternoon, which is a group that we're working on trying to get the youth voice into government, getting, getting them involved. I'm hoping to attend the chamber mixer in the afternoon. I have a COC Executive Committee meeting on Thursday in the morning at nine. At one thirty, I have a HOPE Rising Budget Review meeting. And then we'll be attending the Behavioral Health, Mental Health Board from three to five, then going to the Top Forty BBQ at Clare Lake High School in the evening. On Friday, I have meetings with constituents. On Saturday, I'll be on the radio with Mr. Moorhead, KPFC. And then Monday, I'm meeting with constituents. And then that evening, five o'clock, Zoom meeting with the Scotts Valley Community Meeting, looking at the water in Scotts Valley and how we're, how we're monitoring that and getting information from Water Resources. And then back here on Tuesday.
Perfect. Thank you so much. Looks like we still have a little bit of time. So I'll go ahead and do my report real quick or as quickly as I can. Just want to let you know that this week, we had anticipated to bring you the second quarterly report from the EDTF that will be coming to you next week. So be prepared for that. We did, I did join a meeting that is of, should be of interest to all of us. We'll see exactly what it entails, but the idea is a great idea. It's the Blue Zones. It was presented by Supervisor Scott as well as Adventist Health, as well as the Blue Zones Group. And basically, it's enhancing the health and the life outcomes, quality of life of the entire county and, and the people that live here. And so definitely interested in seeing what comes out of that and hoping to hear more soon. And I'm sure we will. We did start our EOCs for the drought, drought declaration, and those will be continuing most likely weekly, but we'll, we'll see as we move forward. I did want to read you an email that I received just to let you know of some of my communication that I've had with the state. I was slightly frustrated that we have to be within five percent of the average vaccination rate for the state of California when we finally reached all the key components we needed to, to hit yellow. We were below two percent positivity rate. We were below fourteen total number of case counts. And this is one of the comments that I received back from the state, which is doses allocated or administered via federal programs such as Department of Defense, Veterans Affairs, and Indian Health Services are not used to calculate vaccine coverage. And living in an environment where we have the highest per capita veteran population in the state of California, granted, it's not a huge number, but on per capita, it, it impacts us greatly. And I'm not sure where we are with the population of Native Americans here, but I am certain it is one of the highest per capita for the state of California as well, as we have a large population. For those numbers not to count, doesn't settle well for me. And I know that it's not going to change anything. We have about four weeks left until this whole tiered system is done. But the fact that we could have been there possibly and that this additional five percent within the average has hit us, it, it, it just, it's seems as we're, we're trying to move forward, more hurdles are being found. And the fact that certain people are not counted almost as people, yet they absolutely count in our community is, is just a very strange situation. So I wanted to share with you what I received from the state. I let him hear a piece of my mind on what I thought of that. Not sure that it'll change anything, but at least wanted to let you be aware of that. Also, did want to, let me check to see if we have, it looks like he's here. So I will pause on my report and we will open up our item. And welcome Senator McGuire. And our nine forty-five AM item, six point three, Presentation to the Board Regarding the Smart Start Bright Future Initiative. And this is going to take, this is a program that will absolutely impact the area that I serve and I couldn't be happier to hear more about it. And we have some great speakers to talk to us about it as well. And I'm going to pass it on to CAO Hutchinson to start us off first.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Took me just a moment to get to my mute button. So I apologize on that.
You gotta mute your You gotta mute your Zoom.
Well, it is. Okay, there we go. Sorry about that. So I just mainly want to introduce Senator McGuire and the rest of the team that is here to present this project today. You'll be hearing not only from our senator, but from Lisa Witke Schaffner, from Becky Salado, and Faith Hornby. And near the end of the presentation, we'll talk about the fact that we're putting a placeholder in your recommended budget that you will hear on June 9. And it is our hope that your board will want to contribute some funding to this effort. Good morning, Senator.
Good morning, Madam CAO. I'm honored to be able to be with you. Mr. Chair, Honorable Board of Supervisors, thank you so much for allowing us to be able to present to you on the Smart Start Bright Future Initiative. As the CAO just mentioned, I'm honored to be joined with Lisa and Faith and Becky to be able to present today to each and every one of you. Want to say thank you for allowing this incredible team to be able to join you today. We're excited to be able to present a landmark initiative that would be called Smart Start Bright Future here in Lake County. And this is all in partnership with HOPE Rising. This initiative, we firmly believe, will be the largest and the boldest anti- childhood poverty measure in recent Lake County history. Bringing together multiple sectors in our community and from throughout the region, all focused on one thing, ensuring that all kids from all backgrounds have an equal opportunity to thrive. It's simple but bold. I think we can all agree that Lake County is an amazing place to be able to call home. The unique communities that make up this incredible county are truly special. And the people, and the people are the heart of Lake County. We know that Lake County has a higher percentage of kids living in poverty compared to the rest of California. And like any other time, when neighbors are in need, Lake County comes together and rallies. And this is no different. We're rallying for our kids here today. In some communities, such as Clear Lake and Lower Lake, about half of all the kids live in poverty. We know that Lake County ranks in the bottom quarter for prenatal care. Prenatal care can be described as preventative checkups for babies and young kids, checkups for baby's nutrition, disease screening, or addiction screening for moms and parents. We know that Lake County ranks 77% lower than the national average for prenatal care for both kids and moms. The Smart Start Bright Future Initiative came together to be able to address these challenges. Because if we don't, those issues that impact kids will impact them even greater as an adult. Would like to talk about the four pillars of this initiative. First and foremost, this initiative is going to be data-driven. We'll launch the Smart Start Eligibility Wizard Portal that will help parents of newborns to five-year-olds receive a list of services and programs that their family is eligible to be able to receive for prenatal care, new mom care, and healthcare access for young kids. Second, this initiative will deploy a Smart Start Family Resource Navigator, a person who will connect new moms to services prior to birth or at the birth of a new child. Through this navigator position, service providers can check symptoms on postpartum depression, provide referrals to additional community resource and home visits, make available specialized training to serve those with prenatal substance abuse disorder, and they will connect moms and kids to healthcare. Third, this initiative will invest in academic-driven after-school programs. We know that academic-driven after-school programs boost classroom performance and test scores for kids. It establishes a foundation for success long-term in their schooling career. It reduces risky behaviors and provides a safe, structured environment for kids of working parents. We propose enhancing, greatly enhancing, the Conacti School District's after-school program, focusing on STEM as a locally-driven solution to help kids get ahead. Again, equal access for all kids, no matter their background, to thrive. Finally, this initiative will open up the doors to college and trade schools by bringing in nationally-recognized 10,000 Degrees. They're a nonprofit who is award-winning throughout the United States of America, and they help students from low-income backgrounds get to and through college. They're really a game changer of an organization. 10,000 Degrees will not only help with graduation rates in the school district, they will increase college access rates for students. Now, this proposal has been nearly two years in the making, and we would not be here without four amazing organizations. First and foremost, we want to take a moment to say thank you to Faith, Hope Rising, and their board. They have been the driving force on the ground in Lake County to get this initiative launched. Number two, we want to say thank you to the John Jordan Foundation, Adventist Health Clear Lake, and the Redwood Credit Union Foundation. The John Jordan Foundation, Adventist Health Clear Lake, and Redwood Credit Union Foundation have already invested $300,000 each over the next three years to launch. And HOPE Rising will be overseeing Smart Start Bright Future in ensuring its success. And we would be honored if your board would consider helping make this initiative a reality in joining the Founder's Circle. Finally, Mr. Chair, I'd like to be able to introduce three additional speakers who will be joining us here today. We're going to hear from Lisa Schaffner, who is the original Founder's Circle member and Executive Director of the John Jordan Foundation. We're then going to turn it over to our fantastic Superintendent of Schools, Becky Salado. And then, of course, we're going to turn it over to Faith Hornby, the Executive Director of HOPE Rising. I just want to take a moment to say thank you, Mr. Chair, to your county administrative officer, who has been focused on all issues of the pandemic, continued fire recovery, and for her commitment to be able to bring this forward along with you, Mr. Chair and your board. We would, though, not be here today without the leadership and vision of Lisa Schaffner. She has a lifelong dedication to kids. She is the Executive Director of the John Jordan Foundation. And she is really the rallying point on who brought other Founder's Circle members to the table. She has a lifelong dedication to investing in childhood health and success in Sonoma County. And as an executive officer of the John Jordan Foundation, she truly has changed lives over these past many years on the most vulnerable youth in Sonoma County. And now she wants to be able to commit, commit to improving the lives of young people in Lake County as well. So, Mr. Chair, if it's all right with you, sir, would like to better turn the floor over to Lisa Witke Schaffner, the Executive Director of the John Jordan Foundation.
Thank you so much, Senator McGuire. I am thrilled to be here. As you can see, I have my seven-week-old grandson in my arms. I'm actually in Florida. I sent his parents on a date today, on their first date. So I apologize if he makes noise, but he is one day younger than McGuire's darling little boy. So that's pals for trouble eventually someday, hopefully. I just wanted to share with you, thank you. And thank you to all of you. And I'm so sorry that we have not got to sit together in person. I really have been very involved in Lake County for almost two years, and only so few of you have got to actually sit across the table. I know Supervisor Scott and I had some time before the pandemic came, but I want to share with you that coming to Lake County and being so accepted is a big deal. The John Jordan Foundation believes in investing in young people. I also get to sit on the Sonoma County Board of Education so daily. I see the needs in schools. It is, it's big. And we can do something really big for your young people. So when I got involved, Senator McGuire started the City Council in 2004. We had regular meetings. And I said, I think we want to expand outside of Sonoma County. And sure enough, without a blink, your senator said, you got to go to Lake. It's an amazing, it's an amazing place, and there's a lot of need. So we're here to invest and be partners, and we're not going anywhere. We're committed for the next three years to $300,000. Very, very lucky to also sit on the Board of Redwood Credit Union, which I know is one of your valued businesses who really want to be a part of your community and be partners also. So they've committed the same amount. And then, I don't have to tell any of you, you know your area so much better. Adventist Health, just amazing partners. So I will not, he is being so good. I'm glad, going to tempt Faith on this one. I just wanted to share with you that any questions you have for me, I can get you my contact information. We are also happy to have conversations about other investments, but right now, this is the most important piece. I was so heartened to get on your Zoom and hear different supervisors talk about quality of life and young people and getting young people involved. I thought, wow, I am really in the right place. So thank you so much. I will turn it over to a woman who needs no introduction. I've been so impressed, to Becky Salado. And thank you for having me, and I will be back anytime you want to chit chat about this, or we can do updates on this really important initiative. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Lisa and Senator, and thank you, board, for the opportunity to share our excitement about this initiative on behalf of my board, the District Conacti Unified School Board, and more importantly, our students. We are so excited about this opportunity, and we appreciate all of the support from this community. Lake County truly is an amazing place, but we also have a great deal of challenges. And we know to keep this community thriving and moving forward, education is the key to our success in the future. We also recognize that we controlled has a school district, a small amount of time in our students' lives during the daytime. And equally important to their success is what they're provided prior to coming to us and after leaving us. And this is why this initiative is so much stronger than many I've seen in the past and what we are so excited about, because it truly is a comprehensive, full-circle support of our kids, and more importantly, our future. Starting with our, from birth, supporting our moms and our little ones, so they're getting what they need, so they come prepared to school, ready to learn. And then, as we're working through school to provide that after-school support, which we know is incredibly important in our kids believing that they can be successful in school every day, attending school every day, and allowing our teachers the opportunity to do what they do best, is instruct those kids during the day, knowing that they're going to a safe place in the evening with opportunities to grow and opportunities to have basic needs like an evening meal met, which is so important to all of our students. And then, 10,000 Degrees, as we take those kids who are thriving in our educational system, and they believe they can go on to whatever they choose to, then an organization side by side with us to help them get into that higher ed and support them through it, debt-free, is just a phenomenal opportunity for all of our students. And we're, as I've said, we're super excited and super grateful to everyone that's been involved in this. And we truly hope that the county continues to support us in this way. I'm happy also to answer any questions. I think most of you know where you can reach me pretty much every day. So please, reach out if there's anything from the district side that you have questions about. And I believe I'll turn this over to Faith.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Senator McGuire, Lisa, and Superintendent Becky. I wanted to talk really briefly about our launch that we're planning to share. So we're looking forward to sharing our Smart Start Bright Future progress and plans with the public, our partners, and supporters through a virtual launch event that will be taking place June 4th, 2021, from 12:00 PM to 1:00 PM. This launch will be hosted by Senator Mike McGuire and Lisa Witke Schaffner, Executive Director of the John Jordan Foundation. At this launch, we'll be discussing the story of our initiative and how you can play a part in helping with our local youth. We will also be going into more detail regarding our initiative pillars, which is the Eligibility Wizard, the Smart Start Navigator, the after-school programs, and our last pillar that will enhance our high school youth getting in and to through college from 10,000 Degrees. We will also be introducing our partners and founders. I will go ahead and share the Eventbrite link in this chat, but you can also find the link on HOPERISING.org or on our Facebook event page, and we look forward to seeing you there. I will send that in the chat now.
Thank you so much, Mr. Hornby. Very grateful. Mr. Chair, we'll turn it back over to you. Happy to answer any questions or comments. We would be honored to be able to have the county's participation in our launch event, of course. And again, know that times are tough. Economic times are challenging. But if you would consider joining us as a Founder's Circle member, we would be grateful. And again, Mr. Chair, to your board, just want to say thank you for your commitment to so many issues here in Lake County, but in particular, our youth. And I'll turn it back over to you, Mr. Chair. Thank you for allowing us to be able to be with you and to be able to present.
Thank you very much. Thank you to all the speakers for the work that you've put in to bring this to us. Looking forward to this starting. I, this is close to my heart. Superintendent Salado knows me very well, and she knows, she said what I feel, which is education is probably the number-one attribute that we can look at anywhere around the world that shows what the outcomes of life will most likely be, what the quality of life will most likely be. And that's something that we need to work on. And it's not a short-term, one-time idea. This is a long-haul idea. All of us here on this board, and most likely in the Zoom room, and those that are listening, know David Santos from Adventist Health, and he has been saying a mantra, at least for more than a decade, which is breaking the cycle. And I'm going to be honest with you, we haven't done that. And we've all worked so hard. And that's, that's the part that we need to, this is why we need the long-haul, because it is hard to break a long-term impact of having such constant poverty issues, such challenges, access to healthcare, access to education, higher education, and things of the like. We have to figure out how to always stick by the sides of our youth to ensure that they have the opportunities to be successful adults. And so this is definitely close to my heart. I appreciate the presentation. I'm thrilled to hear that this is happening very close to where I am, so I will see the impacts. I do want to thank, and I'm going to venture an assumption, that Supervisor Scott has been a part of this, and she's part of HOPE Rising. And I know that this is also very close to her heart, so I'm going to open it up for the board members to also make comments and ask questions if they have Supervisor Scott?
Well, as a member of HOPE Rising, I was very aware of this. I've been with Senator McGuire at the beginning two years ago, so I just want to thank him for being a champion for Lake County. He really is. We're very fortunate to have Senator McGuire coming in, bringing these initiatives, bringing funding, the ideas. As Chair of HOPE Rising, we were tasked with, we need to change the way Lake County operates here. We need to move that needle. Something big has to happen. And this initiative will be the largest impact we will see with our youth. And again, it's not going to be something that's going to take a couple of years. This is something that's going to span out from the time the children are in the womb to the time they exit high school. And this is, this is a bold move, but this is the move we need to make to change Lake County. I also sit on First Five. I'm very fortunate to sit on these two committees. And First Five knows that if we don't change the lives of our youth, Lake County will never change. So thank you again. I hope, I feel that the board will support this initiative, and I'm really thankful, and I'm just, I'm excited to hear what everybody else has to say about this.
Thank you very much. Any other comments or questions?
I just want to thank Supervisor Scott for really leading this initiative in our county and for the support outside of our county from Senator McGuire and so many people. This is such an important move, and I'm really excited to see this roll out.
Thank you very much. Supervisor Simon?
Yeah, I want to thank Senator McGuire, always, as Supervisor Scott said, just being a champion for Lake County. When we reach out, we get a response, whether it's something we want to hear or not, we always get responded to. So I always want to say thank you for that collaboration for Lake County's behalf and its citizens, and absolutely say thank you to Supervisor Scott. I know that when she came on the board, we came on the board together, but clearly understood that her drive for the long-term success for Lake County was going to be in the youth. So, good job, Tina. And I know it's a partnership and a lot of people working, but ultimately support this. Coming from the tribal side, clearly understand about building a community and changing the future, the next seven generations. I like the long-term investment, because you get to grow and see that as you become from, I hate to say it, an elder, which is coming on pretty soon for myself and even here in the county. And this is the kind of investment that we talked about in 2028, our vision for the long-term success of Lake County. And ultimately, being a coach here in the community, understanding how impactful programs like this are when they start early in their youth is fully supported by myself. So ultimately, we'll wait till the budget comes along and we'll figure those situations out. But when we talk about the budget comes along, and we'll figure those situations out. But when we talk about investing, I think this will be one of the most important things we do with our budget this year, so.
Thank you very much. I will say that I'm aware of the allocation that we've done with our cannabis taxes. Part of that is, one section is education, and maybe that's where we can find some of the money for this program to help participate in the funding. I think, I just want to leave with this. In the city of Clear Lake alone, in the state of California, 31% of the population has a bachelor's degree. In Lake County, it's 16%. In Clear Lake, it's 8%. Just because you don't have an education, does, a higher level education does not make you a bad person. What it does is it makes you, makes you a good person with challenges. And that's the community that I see every single day, is people who give the skin off their backs when there's the need for them to step up, who barely have anything to even give in the first place because of the challenges that they have to meet with every single day. We have to make the change. We need to be in it for the long haul. We need to be dedicated to making that change. I appreciate that we have people from outside our community, inside our community, in our state, that want to help us make that change. And it's going to really reside with us here to want to join and participate in making that change happen. And I think we can do this. So, I'm really excited about it. I'd love to get more, as many details as possible. I want to be involved as much as I can. Thank you very much for bringing this to us. And we're going to open this up for the public in case there's any public comments.
Mr. Chair, before you open to the public, could we let our Senator make one more remark?
Please. Senator Maguire.
Mr. Chair, I apologize. I just wanted to, again, say thank you to your entire Board. And, you know, you all recognize Supervisor Scott. And I just want to take a moment to say thank you to the Supervisor. It was beyond two years ago now that we all sat down at the soft shop, and the power was out, and it was blazing hot. And Supervisor Scott proposed an initiative that we could all get involved in. And just being honest with each and every one of you, thanks to Supervisor Scott's leadership, we're here today. And Supervisor Scott, I just want to take a moment to recognize you, your vision, your bold leadership, and your willingness to be able to work with us, and your patience to be able to get this initiative launched. But again, this would not be happening without Supervisor Scott, and just wanted to take a moment to say how grateful we are to you each and every day. Just two quick points, 30 seconds or less. There are accountability measures built into Smart Start Bright Future and program evaluation. This is going to be data-driven, and we're going to ensure if programs aren't working, we're going to ensure to those who we serve, the youth, that we will do a course correction. So, there are built-in accountability measures for Hope Rising, for First Five, for the school district, for 10,000 Degrees, and you're going to look at constant annual evaluation of the programs. That was really important to Lisa Wiki Schaffner, to be able to build those accountability measures in. And candidly, it's about being accountable, that the dollars are being spent, and we're looking at lives changed. The last piece I'll say is, we've been receiving some questions about, is this going to expand above and beyond Clear Lake, Lower Lake, et cetera? That is our goal. We'd like to be able to start within the Connect United Unified School District, within the communities of Lower Lake as well as Clear Lake, and look at expansion across the county. We believe that we're going to change lives in these communities and in the school district, and we'd like to replicate that to any other school district or community that would have us in the county of Lake as funding in bandwidth allows with Hope Rising. Again, Mr. Chair, thank you for allowing us to be with you, and I'm sorry to add those words in.
No, I appreciate the added words. Please don't apologize. Thank you so much Supervisor Scott for your dedication. Absolutely appreciate that.
And I just wanted to add to that the Navigator piece that we're going to be seeing at Adventist Health, we already see that at Sutter Hospital. Sutter Hospital has a Navigator through First Five. So, we've already seen how this works, and the lives changed for mamas when they're, when they're given information, when they're shown where they can go to get the help needed. So, we've already, we've already seen how these pieces can work. So, as Senator Maguire said, we really do hope to implement this throughout the county. And again, prevention is going to cost a whole lot more, or a whole lot less than it would on the other end. So, it's, it's going to be saving the community money.
And I think the timing is also absolutely incredible. The city of Clear Lake is moving forward at a rate that I've never seen before for economic development. And I think that the two programs, economic development and the Smart Start Bright Future, put together is only going to propel each other further and maximize the outcome. So, I think it's perfect timing and looking forward to it. Let's go ahead and open it up for the public. We have phone 6205, if we can unmute. And again, please provide your name.
Yes, this is Bart Levinson. Good morning. I want to thank you for this, this matter that you're discussing now. And say that we've heard from the Brock Falkenberg, the board, the super, sorry, the Superintendent of Schools of Lake County say that we have hundreds of homeless schoolchildren in Lake County. Last night at 9:30 at the Walmart parking lot in Clear Lake, there was what looked like a 12-year-old holding a sign that said, "Hungry? Please help." Who is reaching out to the homeless children in Lake County? I don't know. I wish I did know. I wish I'd known last night who I could call to help this young man.
Supervisor Scott?
That would be Redwood Community Services. They have a hub here in Lakeport, but they work all around the lake to help our youth that are, that are homeless. So, that would be somebody to reach out to.
Thank you very much.
And go to that spot where we all know that at, at the Walmart parking lot, that's where we see homeless people. And it's stunning to hear our superintendents say year after year that they know that Lake County has hundreds of homeless children. I'm not sure this is being adequately addressed.
And while I don't want to belittle the idea of homeless children, I do want to make sure that you understand the definition, and that many of them are couch surfing. They do not have a permanent home. There's not too many that are outside of a home. They just don't have any consistency in shelter, which is an unfortunate situation. I know that I, unfortunately, I used to help out with the Lake County Safe House that did have to close down, the nonprofit shut down. And we were helping up to six youth to be sheltered in that facility. And we provided shelter for up to 80 youth over the course of the decade that we took, took on some of them. We even took on some of our college students as well, as they graduated from high school and moved on. We wanted to continue to give them that support. There is work to bring back the Lake County Safe House, as that was one of the, one of the only places that you can bring our youth to. Difficult tasks, difficult subject matter. Glad they're still Redwood Community Services, that is offering some programs for that, and something that we need to keep our eye on, and expanding those services as well. So, I appreciate the comment. Our next public comment from Julie Colfax?
Hello again. Thank you so much to all of you. This is such a necessary and desperately needed program. Julie Colfax, Licensed MFT, and Chair of your current Mental Health Advisory Board. I just wanted to say, in response actually to the previous commenter, that I have direct contact with many of our homeless students on a weekly basis, and work with them on mental health issues and finding stability wherever they can. And I think this program will only increase the resources available both to them and to their families. Because most often, if we have a student who's homeless, it's not just the student, it's the entire family who's facing the homelessness. And I know for a fact that many of them also deal with mental illness in their families, and that's frequently one of the reasons that they find themselves homeless. And so, all of these programs, this is a wonderful, wonderful way to improve the outlook for all of those children and their families as well, and to break the generational gap, the generational poverty that we have here in this county, which is really quite a travesty, but it is, it is something we can work with and we can heal. And so, I want to say a shout out as well to Superintendent Salado, as we provide mental health services in this district for the whole school district. And I think that's been a gigantic difference for our children here to have that additional support as well. And so, this is, this can only make things even better for our families and our community. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much for your comments. I do not see any more hands raised for public comment in the Zoom room. Is there any public comment here in the chamber? Seeing none, we'll bring it back. Senator Maguire, thank you so much for leading the cause here and bringing us this important topic to discuss. I'm looking forward for when this is released and started. Please involve us as much as you can. We want to see this be a success, and of course, we'll review this in our budget to figure out how we can fit it in and what we can do.
Mr. Chair, thank you. Board of Supervisors, thank you. Madam CAO, thank you so much for allowing us to be here in, to our 100% partners. Again, Mr. Chair, 100% teamwork between Ms. Schaffner, Adventist Health, Edward Credit Union Foundation, Ms. Hornby, of course, with Superintendent Salado. Very, very grateful for their leadership. And Mr. Chair, thank you for your consideration of this request.
Thank you very much. All right, let's go ahead and move on. I believe that I was finishing up my weekly calendar, and then that's all there was on our agenda for the moment until our 1:30 time. So, let me, I was going to talk to you about a call that I had yesterday, which was a review from CSAC on our budget, on the budget review for May. And I just kind of wanted to highlight a few things. One of them that was brought to my attention was Supervisor Pyska, you talked about a park. There is more money being offered for public parks. And so, that has the possibility to possibly help you with that. There is, I'm just going to go over some, so $2.6 billion in rental assistance, up to 100% of re-irages. There's $500 million also that will be provided to transportation agencies. So, LTA might be able to take advantage of some of these things. $1.75 billion for affordable housing projects to help fund those gaps that, the funding gaps that there may be. Health and Human Services, I know that the county portion of IHSS was being reviewed at increasing. That has now been pushed further into the future, so it will remain, I believe, at the 35%. I'm looking at CAO Hutchinson.
Yes.
It will remain at the 35%. I believe they added another two years. Realignment revenues are actually higher than projected, not only for this year, but also for next year, which is great news, as we were kind of worried whether that was going to continue or not. More money for, for the AAA services, area aging, I never, agency, something of the kind. Sorry if I didn't get that correctly. The amount of funding coming out for homeless programs, I'm guessing that behavioral health will have access to these funds in order to continue some of the programs that we've already begun over the course of the last year.
Through our COC, yes.
Yes, through the Continuum of Care. And they spoke about the Continuum of Care immensely during that conversation. A lot going into children's behavioral health as well. Then, of course, some, one of the biggest things is broadband. $7 billion will be made available. $4 billion of that is for the middle mile network. The middle mile network is basically going to be almost like an open source fiber optic. That way, anyone that has the capability to offer you a broadband service has access to those middle miles. And it's the last mile that they have to take care of. But there's also going to be some $2 billion for that last mile through the CPUC to connect to those who don't have access to broadband services. So, there's a whole bunch of money being thrown at broadband, which is great, maybe a year late, but we still need it today. Nothing has changed. Those things still happen. $50 million for library infrastructures. I know that we've been talking about, it was brought to our attention, I believe, from Christopher Veach, our librarian, about the infrastructure of our libraries. And so, hopefully, that could be made available. And also, they have some money for broadband money for libraries, for equipment and access and things like that, that we might be able to take advantage of. And that's the highlights that I can see. I don't want to read every single note that I had. But the amount of money, again, being thrown at housing and homelessness and behavioral health creates a lot of opportunities for us, as we are well aware that we could use some of those opportunities. This upcoming week, as Supervisor Simon mentioned, I have my LAFCO meeting I'll be going to. I have a marketing committee over in the city of Clear Lake, a CSAC call the following day, and a Clear Lake City Council meeting to join in. Looks like we have our drought emergency EOC meeting in the morning on Friday. And I'll be meeting with the CEO of Adventist Health, David Santos, on Monday, and meeting with our CAO and preparing for our meeting that will happen on Tuesday. Have a CSAC call later on that day as well, and then back here for another meeting. And that is my report for my upcoming activities. Checking in with all Board members. I believe we've hit all of the items on here except for our 1:30 items. And so, I suggest that we go into our closed session right now, and then we will meet back here for further open session at 1:30 PM. And so, I'll go ahead and read the closed session. Conference with legal counsel, existing litigation pursuant to government code, Section 54956.9D1, Center for Biological Diversity versus County of Lake Attaw. Conference 89.2, Conference with legal counsel, existing litigation pursuant to government code, Section 54956.9D1, California Native Plant Society versus County of Lake Attaw. 9.3, public employee appointment pursuant to government code, Section 54957B, Appointment of Public Health Officer. 9.4, Conference with legal counsel, significant exposure to litigation pursuant to government code, Section 54956.9D2E1, One Potential Case. And that will go ahead and end our current open session, and we will go into closed session and then come back again at 1:30. How about we take a 10-minute break before we start closed session? Okay, so at 10:37, we will start our closed session. Thank you for joining us, everyone. Sounds like everything is ready to go. Welcome back. It is 1:31 PM, and we are coming back to you as, sitting as the Board of Equalization, and we are going to go through some assessment appeals. We're going to start with 8.1, approved stipulation on the following assessment appeal applications. Appeal number 09-2019, LOC. Appeal number 27-2019 and 28-2019, I'm going to say that wrong, so I'm just going to leave it out. Appeal number 42-2019, Ireland. Appeal number 43-2019, Spurling. And Richard Ford, our assessor, is here with us, and so please go ahead and provide us with the presentation on this item.
Sure. So, the stipulations are going to go fairly quickly. And I, as well as you just did, is I'm going to do it by appeal number. So, 09 to 2019, we received a stipulation, basically, 49 was when the constituent signed it of 21. And so, that stipulation is for backup, the clerk does have it. Basically, goes from land, assessed value of 250 to applicant's opinion of 165, corrected value is 227, a difference of 23,000. Improvements, 200,000, applicant's opinion of value is 137, corrected assessed value is 137, difference of 63,000. So, that one's good. Unless you guys have any questions, I'll just keep going.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair.
Yes, please, Ms. Grant.
Your Board can certainly have all of these presented, one after the other, but each stipulation will have to be taken up separately.
Okay. And so, we just did the 09-2019, correct?
Yep, 09-2019. Yep, 09-2019.
Okay. And so any questions on this one item from the board? I do have a question, and this will be more of a general question that covers all of them. When I was going through this, I saw quite a drop in the value on roll and the applicant's opinion of value. And just curious if that is something that is normal to see such a discrepancy of almost 30%, because here it's a drop of about $150,000 out of 450. Just kind of curious how that came about to go from the value on the roll and then the approved opinion of the applicant.
Okay, so you asked a couple of questions. First question, was that normal? The answer will be depends. Each appeal is going to be separate, going to be a different case. We and the assessor's office are always going to make the valuation based on the information we know. And so if the information we know is light, for lack of a better description, we're going to take that best valuation, basically pronouncement. And then usually what ends up happening, like in this case, information will come to us that, hey, what you saw, or what you had at your disposal as far as information, with a little light, and here's some additional information. And so that's why it's hard to say that each one would be a substantial difference. It could be a small difference. It could be, as you can see on the, as we go through this, in later examples, there's, it's fine. They thought it was too high. Once we talked about it, told them how we viewed it, how we, what we took into account. Some people were like, that's fine. We now understand it. So it just depends. I can't give you a broad-based answer to say like, oh, it's always going to be this way, or it's always going to be that way. It just depends. And a lot of it is based on the information we receive or have at our disposal, whether that be the latest time we visited somebody, as far as a property, or whatever electronic information we have, Parcequest, Google Maps, any, or Google Earth, in this case, any scenario like that would help us.
Okay. And if it's possible, just for further description on this one, what was the circumstances that you found that made it possible to say, yes, the 302 is, is good versus the 450? What was the difference?
The background was they purchased a home from nonprofit with some unforeseen issues. Once they let us know what the issues are, we basically did a cost to cure. And so there was roof damage, there was septic tank replacement, foundation deterioration. Those were just the three or four highlights. And so that kind of goes back to my example is, so at the beginning, on face value, if you look at that property, let's say at Google Earth, or the last time somebody's been out there, maybe that was in halfway decent shape. But since that time, it has deteriorated. The standard kind of maintenance on a property clearly was not upheld. Otherwise, the septic tank wouldn't have those things, the roof wouldn't have damage, and so on. And so once it comes to our opinion, we get that information, we make an opinion accordingly, and in this case, it went down. Does that help?
Yeah. And I still have a little bit more questions. Do you do a site visit for each one of these when you do the original assessment? Or do you only look at the Google map?
I would love to say we do a site visit, and we can talk about that at budget time if you want to give me more manpower. We have 65,000 parcels throughout the county, and that is not included, the business property. We have essentially, what is it, about seven appraisers plus management? That's almost nearly impossible. And by the way, is almost nearly impossible on every assessor's office across the state. There's not nearly enough staff to go visit the properties as often as we'd like. We are getting closer as my staff gets more and more experienced. We are getting closer and closer to doing that more often. But I would definitely not be telling the truth if I told you we visited every property that we reassessed.
And final question, upon receiving these appeals, at that point, do you do a site visit?
It depends. And it's going to go back to my previous description. If they can provide information, some of that information might just be electronic. It might be that they've already incurred the cost to cure, and they're providing that information to us. So in some cases, yes, some cases, no. It really honestly depends. And it depends on the rest of the workload in the office also. So there's no absolute answer on that.
Okay. And then something related to this as well, I see here that this was received, the appeal on July 22, 2019. I believe that by state mandate, we have two years to bring this back to the Board of Supervisors, but that there's also extensions currently in effect from our governor's office. Is that correct?
The extensions, to be perfectly honest, it depends on which part of the office you're talking about. I think there are some extensions, but there, I've not heard about the extension on the business property. So I don't want to say absolutely. I'd have to go back and double check what the latest and greatest on that is. But you are correct. And so, but let me correct a little bit of your language. When you say it comes back before the Board of Supervisors, it does not. It is not the Board of Supervisors legally. It is the local Board of Equalization. So as you stated at the very beginning, you guys change hats legally. And so, yes, you have two years. And you'll see as we go through the day, you have some people that have gone through and they want to do, as you described, extensions. But technically, we have about two years. Our average turnaround is shrinking as far as how soon we get to our guys, but it's still right around two years. It was about two years when I got here, a pretty solid two years. Now it's becoming a little bit less than two years in most cases.
Thank you very much. I believe Ms. Grant had something to say.
The only thing that I would say is that it's, just for purposes of specificity, and certainly your board announced that you were sitting as the local Board of Equalization at the beginning of the matter. I would say it's not about two years. You have two years. And if the assessor's office is not certain that there is an extension, I would guess that there is not, and your board should proceed under the assumption that the two years.
Okay, thank you very much. That's it for my questions specifically on this item. Any further questions from the board? Seeing none, let's open it up for the public. If anyone in the public wishes to speak on this item, both in Zoom room and in the chamber, please go ahead and raise your hand. If you're in the Zoom room, please click the button at the bottom of your screen to raise your hand. Or if you're calling in via telephone, dial *9. And seeing none, let's go ahead and bring it back to the board.
I'm going to grab my pen, but, Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to approve the stipulation on the following assessment appeal. We're doing each one of these separately, correct?
Yes. Okay. And was that a, so a motion from Supervisor Simon? Was that a second from Supervisor Scott?
Yes.
All right, Johanna, roll call, please.
Okay, so I'm, so you guys would be directors, correct? Rather than supervisors. Anita, that's a question for you.
Yes, you're correct. It's not the supervisors. It's the board members.
Okay, okay, thank you. So Director Simon?
Yes.
Director Scott?
Aye.
Director Pyska?
Yes.
And Director Sabatier?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, and we are going to move on to, I apologize, I opened up a file accidentally. We're going to move on to appeal number 27-2019.
Okay, so I have a question for Anita. Both of these are with the same property owner. For 27, 2019, and 28, 2019, do we have to do it separately for each one, even if it's the same property owner?
Mr. Chair, may I?
Yes, Ms. Grant, I'm sorry.
That's all right, thank you. These are stipulations as to a particular piece of property for a particular year, and your board may have particular questions for each one. So yes, you do have to take them up separately.
Okay, that's perfectly fine with us. So in addressing 27, 2019, they did file a stipulation. The land value on the assessor's roll was 56,100. Applicant's opinion of value is 20,000. Corrected assessed value was 38,760, difference of 17,340. And that was dated on 5/5/21.
And any questions from the board, from the directors? None? Let's go ahead and open it up to the public. Any public comment on this specific Okay, and seeing none, we'll bring it back to the board.
Mr. Chair, I will move to, this is Director Simon, appeal number 27-2019. And it had both of them in there, but we're going separately on this.
Yes.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion from Supervisor Simon, a second from Supervisor Scott. Johanna, roll call, please.
Okay, Director Simon?
Yes.
Director Scott?
Aye.
Director Pyska?
Yes.
And Director Sabatier?
Aye.
Thank you.
All right. Next, we are going to the following appeal on 8.1, which is 28-2019. Mr. Ford?
Okay, so we are at 28, 2019. Assessor's roll value was 71,400. Applicant's opinion of value is 25,000. Corrected assessed value is 38,760, a difference in roll value of 32,640. And that was signed on 5/5/21.
Okay. Any questions from board members? Seeing none. Any questions or comments from the public? Seeing none. Let's bring it back to the board.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the stipulation for application 28, 2019.
Second.
We have a motion from Supervisor Pyska, a second from Supervisor Simon. Johanna, roll call, please.
Okay, Director Simon?
Aye.
Director Scott?
Aye.
Director Pyska?
Yes.
And Director Sabatier?
Aye.
Thank you.
And then we're going to move on to our last one on here, or second to last one, appeal number 42-2019.
Okay, so 42 on 2019, we did receive a stipulation on the land. The assessed roll value was 541,069. The applicants didn't actually put an opinion to value per land and improvements, but they did in total, which was 525 in total. The corrected value on the assessed value for the land was 325, a difference of 216,069. And improvements, they had 3,47,001 on the assessor's roll. Again, didn't give an opinion of value. They gave one in total. The corrected value put 315, a difference of 32,000,001. And that was dated on 5/11/2021.
Okay. Any comments from the board? Okay, let's go ahead and open it up to the public. Any comments from the public or And we'll bring it back to the board. I will, I feel I need to make a comment on this one, because this is really one of the ones that kind of grabbed my attention when I looked at it. It doesn't have all of the data. It says what the applicant believes. It says what the value roll originally was. It kind of puzzles me that we don't have a specific, unless you said it and I just missed it because I didn't quite understand. We don't have the specific on what the land is and the improvement is to see what the overall thing adds up to. We know what it adds up to, but I don't have the separation of land and improvement. But again, the drastic difference between 890,000 and 525,000 is, is quite a large shift and change. And the reason I bring it up, and I get it that we might see something in one perspective the first time we do this, and then we see it in a different perspective the second time we do this, as we do a little bit more of a deep dive. But the fact is, is that it is asking people to pay taxes on this, and it's such a huge difference. And I'm sorry for taking up too much of the public's time or the board's time on these questions, but have these folks, because of their appeal, been forced to pay the taxes on the $888,000? Or has it been on pause ever since their appeal? Wondering if you can respond to that?
I can respond, but honestly, what, some of your response is actually from the treasure tax collector. When an appeal is filed, they basically reserve their right to that appeal or to that possibility of change. As far as them paying the bill, like I said, that's more in the treasure tax collector's realm. But usually, they are required to pay the bill until the change happens. And once the change happens, in this case, once the change happens and we put the roll correction on for this change, they basically will get a refund. So, but that's, that's R and T code.
And I figured.
So there's not really a lot of opinion to it.
I'm sorry, I didn't catch that last sentence. I was speaking over you.
That's really, really, you know, revenue and taxation code, how that kind of operates. You know, essentially, whatever the valuation is on there is going to be what's on the books. Same thing happens when you buy a house or sell a house. There is a time delay for that change, and that's true with all assessor's office across the state. And so because of that delay, yes, you might be paying something higher or lower depending on the scenario. In this case, yes, that person would have to pay on the 880,000, but that is revenue and taxation code, like I said. But you're getting into the payment side of it, which is the treasure tax, tax collector's realm, not the assessor's realm. We deal with valuation.
Okay, but, but your valuation is what people are basing, what the tax collector is basing their bills on. So I get it that it's two different entities, but there's a symbiotic relationship to that.
True.
My question then would be that if, for instance, in the same instances as before, we're going to be paying back the money that they overspent because we're approving of these values?
Yes. So you would be paying the difference in this case of 248,070, and everything that, basically that ties to, whether that be the 1% or whether that be direct charges if they're directly tied to the valuation.
Yeah, okay, that's what I thought. I guess I need to better understand how we can get a little closer to the same numbers so that we're not asking somebody to pay a much larger, almost 50%. I know 50% is a bit of a stretch in this example, but it's still a large percentage difference versus what their opinion of the value is. And that's what we're going with today, because I know that that just creates an extra hardship. I know there's already surprises when you're building a house, buying a house, on what your taxes may or may not be. I've been through that, but the, being assessed, and obviously for approving this, being assessed incorrectly on the first time around and fixing it just adds another level of, of burden on those that we want to be successful in being homeowners in the area. And I guess I'm speaking without really going anywhere right now, but just looking for how it is in the future that we can try to get as close to as possible so that we don't have to add that added burden.
Okay, so let me make a correction on your wording incorrectly. We do it based on the information that is available to us. So there's no incorrectly. And if it is an error, there is actually R and T code that basically calls out for an error made by the assessor. But the initial valuation was probably made on information that we had at the time, either compared to comparables, or comparing to the last time we were at the property, or any information we had available to us. So it's got to be very light about our use of incorrectly when it comes to that valuation. Now, as far as, I want to clear up a little bit of your information when it came to the applicant's opinion of value, why it wasn't called out for land and improvements, that's what they submitted on their application. They actually did a overall number and never split it out between land and improvements. So when we actually fill out the stipulation, we're going to fill out in the same way that they apply it. And so that's why you don't have that breakout between each one. All the other components of the system, the land, the improvement on our side, is going to show that split.
And that's what I'm curious about, is what that split would actually be, because in the following tax bill that they receive, it will have that split to show. And so I was just.
Every single one of their tax bills has that split, because it comes from our system.
Right.
So it's not that it's going to be new to them on the split. The difference is going to be the split is going to So it's not that it's going to be new to them on the split, the difference is gonna be the split is going to change slightly.
Well, it has to change to fit what the new value is, of course.
Absolutely.
And I would, while I don't 100% disagree with your correction of my saying it was incorrect, I'm sure from this perspective of the property owner, they wouldn't have appealed it if they didn't think it was correct. So from their perspective, it's not the correct value that has been placed on their property, so.
That's absolutely, that's absolutely right, and I don't have any problem with that. The problem is, is when you're saying something's incorrect when it comes to R and T code, there's some kind of very specific kind of definitions when it comes to the assessor's office. If we make an error, there's actually specific R and T code and rules and stuff that apply to that. So you gotta be very kinda careful when you're saying that that was done incorrectly. It was done as correct as it could with the information and the experience and the time to go out to the field. Now, hopefully, as far as getting back to what you had described as it'd be nice if that could get closer, you're always going to have these scenarios where some of them are very large changes and some of them are small changes. As my staff gets more and more experienced, ideally, that would shrink. But there's no guarantee that that will, and that is true across almost all 50 counties.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Grant, did you have something to add?
I was just, just for point of clarification, that there are certain errors that are delineated in the Revenue and Taxation Code to justify certain actions. And in that circumstance, error is defined within the parameters of that statute. Incorrect is not. And I think your board's point was clear. I would also suggest that in years past, sometimes the assessor would include a brief explanation justifying the stipulation when there was a reduction in value. Your board could certainly ask the assessor's office to provide a brief written synopsis with these stipulations in the future that may answer your questions.
I think that would be helpful to not only have us, but since this is us collecting less money that goes into our coffers, which is then used for services to our community, to better understand why we're reducing that, obviously to the benefit of the property owner, but also possibly at a loss to those receiving services from our community. It'd be nice to be able to explain what was found between the first valuation and the second valuation approval to approve of the reduction, so I do agree with that. Any further questions on this item? Oh, actually, we already did the questions, unless there's more, we can take action. We already opened it up for the public. And we were on 42-2019.
Yep, I jumped ahead.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion to approve the stipulation for Application 42-2019.
Second.
I have a motion from Supervisor Pyska, a second from Supervisor Simon. Johanna, roll call, please.
Okay, Director Simon.
Yes.
Director Scott.
Aye.
Director Pyska.
Yes.
And Director Sabatier.
Aye.
Thank you.
And then we're moving on to Appeal Number 43-2019.
Okay, so 43-2019.
If we can pause just for one second, I am sorry to interrupt.
Just go back on the explanation that we had just talked about, and Anita said we could request. Is there consensus from the board on that? I would agree with that, so I don't know. The explanation, yes, for the future.
Okay. And do I see, is there a yes from the board to request for an explanation to be provided for future appeals? All right, thank you very much. We got consensus. And so, sorry for the interruption, if we can go ahead and continue with 43-2019. And if possible, if you could provide an explanation with this one.
Okay, so 43-2019, this property is on the lakefront with a dock. Similar sales have equivalent lake frontage were used as comparables in readjusting this. The, similar to the previous one, they only gave the overall opinion of value, and they did not break it out between land and improvement. On the assessors' role, we have for land a 421,957. The corrected assessed value, we put at 340, difference of 81,957. Improvements in structures is 869,349 on the assessor's role. The corrected role, or corrected assessed value is 450,000, difference of 19,349. And it was signed on 5/11/2021.
And you said the improved structure has been changed to 450? Is that what was that last statement that you made? You're muted. I'm not sure if you are responding, because you're muted.
I don't know how that got muted, to be honest. So where did it drop? I guess it probably dropped at the 450, so, hey, let's start again. Improvements on the structure, we have 469,349. The corrected assessed value is 450,000, difference of 19,349. And that was signed on 5/11/2021.
And that means that the land value is about 115, is that correct?
The land value is corrected at 340,000.
What's the total assessment?
For a total assessed value of 790,000, difference of 101,306.
I'm looking at 43-2019, and I see here it's assessed, it's, the value is reviewed at 565. I'm confused.
Reviewed at 5, so your 565 number is the opinion, applicant's opinion of value, which means that's what they suggest that it's worth. We have 891,306. After discussions with them, we settled at 790,000, a difference of 101. And the split is 340,000 on land and 450 on improvement.
So I guess I'm looking at just the attachment, and I should be looking at the stipulation. Let me take a look at that, because maybe that's why I'm not seeing those numbers. Because the application is what you received, and the stipulation is probably the final, and that'd probably be best if I just reviewed that.
That would be best, because the application, think about the application as far as process. The application, as they turn it in, is gonna basically say, you know, we understand that you have this example, 500 or 800 and something thousand, we don't think it's worth that, we think it's worth, in this case, 565. But at that point, we've not looked at it again as the assessor's office. Once we look at it, once we come to an agreement, we hear their additional information, in this case, we settled at, what, 790? So it's all based on that, just the application alone is like the first step.
Okay. Yeah, for some reason, on some of the others, the individual appeals, I saw that there was further information on there for the corrected value, so I was looking at the wrong thing. So thank you very much. Any questions on 49-2019 or 43-2019? Seeing none, let's open it up for the public. Any questions on 43-2019 from the public? Bring it back for action.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve stipulation 43-2019.
Second.
I have a motion from Supervisor Scott, a second from Supervisor Simon. Johanna, roll call, please.
Okay, Director Simon.
Aye.
Director Scott.
Aye.
Director Pyska.
Yes.
And Director Sabatier.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, we're gonna move on to 8.2. I'm just gonna read the appeal numbers and not last names. That way I don't skip any specific name or butcher any specific name. Except request for withdrawal in the following assessment appeal applications. Appeal Number 20-2019, 22-2019, 26-2019, 32-2019 to 34-2019, 35-2019, 36-2019, 39-2019, and 40-2019. And Mr. Ford, if you could please present on, do we have to approve each item at a time?
Well, Mr. Chair, if I may ask a question?
Please.
Oftentimes, and in fact, accepting a rote of applications or withdrawal requests is not something that historically your board has had to do, except under particular circumstances. So I'm assuming then that these are all written requests for withdrawal that have been received, and the withdrawal came in after these were all noticed for hearing today? Otherwise, I'm at a loss. Normally, a property owner is permitted to withdraw an application any time prior to a hearing, unless the assessor's indicated a higher value. So I'm just wondering as to whether you have to go through them.
And Mr. Ford, wondering if you can respond to whether or not we received these withdrawals?
And I needed to respond to your answer is, we have noticed in other counties that they've actually brought the withdrawals to the board.
And those are circumstances where the board has procedure that requires it.
Sure, and if we are okay and acceptable with not going through these, I'm completely okay with that. That was our basic trying to do best practice.
Unless these particular appeals were set for hearing before your board today, and the withdrawal has come in since then, if these were withdrawals that had previously come in, I don't know why your board would have to accept these withdrawals. As I said, it's not a past practice. You have nothing in your procedures that requires it here in Lake County. And yes, you would have to take them one by one, but again, generally, according to the Board of Equalization, a property owner is permitted to withdraw before a hearing, so you can't stop them, in other words, from withdrawing their appeal.
So since these have been withdrawn based on input from the property owners, and if that is the case, and just looking for a not or a yes from Mr. Ford, then that means that we can go ahead and move forward to Item 8.3. Continue the following assessment appeal applications, and this seems to be a similar status that if it's within the two-year timeline, and I'm gonna ask Ms. Grant, who I heard her turn her button on for her microphone to speak up.
Yeah, very good hearing, sir.
It's a loud click.
The, in terms of the continuances, again, if these, if all of these many appeals have been set for hearing today, and there is a request to continue today's hearing, your board can certainly take them up one by one and continue the hearings to a date and time certain. If these requests for continuances are just that, that they just don't want to, they want to continue the matter beyond the two years or continue the matter to a particular hearing date or whatever it is, then again, your board doesn't have to pass on something that's not before you.
Right.
So, in this case, I would ask the assessor's office if these were scheduled for hearing today, and then your board may inquire as to the reason for the continuance as you take each one of them. If these requests to continue came in prior to that, then again, this should be within the assessor's authority, keeping in mind, as Mr. Chair, you indicated, that there is that two-year timeframe to have this matter, these matters resolved from the time of the application for change to assessment.
Okay, and so, Mr. Ford, a just quick question. Have all of these that are being requested to continue the following assessments, have they been requested by the property owner to be continued or anything else?
Yes, they have, and so it's gonna fall into exactly what Anita said. And again, this was trying to go to best practice. We've seen this performed, but like Anita said, this is Lake County, and if we're okay with doing it that way, then we'll take it.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair, this isn't a question of best practice, it's a question of a different practice. And Lake County always follows a best practice. It's just that normally, your board doesn't concern itself with unnecessary matters.
And so if it was requested prior to the posting of the agenda, then that means that there's no surprise to the property owners that this will be continued at a later date. And I am fairly certain that Mr. Ford will bring this to us before the deadline or the time expires on these applications. And so we'll go ahead and move on from 8.3, since I'm getting a yes from Mr. Ford. So we'll move on to 8.4. Deny the following assessment appeal applications on timeliness as no request for hearing received. And so, basically, can you explain this to me or at least respond to this question? Their applications for appeal were received by the County of Lake after the deadline to apply for a stipulation, is this correct?
They basically had filed an appeals, so to answer your question, they basically filed an application for appeal, and then we have not had contact. Last contact, as an example, in 18-2019, was in August of 2019. And that's the last contact we've had with that particular appeal application.
And I'm not sure of the rules and regulation, if lost contact means that an appeal can be denied. I'm gonna look at Ms. Grant for guidance on that.
As to each of these circumstances that are before you, where apparently there was an assessment appeal filed and the hearing set before your board today. If the appeal has not been withdrawn, there's been no request to continue, and nothing else has moved forward, then your board can take each of these up and deny these if you think prudent.
Okay, and is that the only status for these, is that there's been no further contact since the original appeal was submitted? Mr. Ford?
That is, do you want to take each one separately?
I think we should, I think we should.
Then let's do one at a time.
Okay.
So, 18-2019.
Hold on one second, I'm sorry to do that to you. I'm just gonna read out the item that we're doing right now so that it's open officially. So we're looking at the assessment appeal applications, Appeal Number 18-2019. And actually, I'm very sorry, now Ms. Grant, I'm sorry to make this a very confusing matter, but the fact that it says deny the following assessment appeals on 8.4 as the heading of our actions to look at, can we look at these appeals differently, or do we need to re-agendize these in a different way?
I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, I'm not following your...
Because I know that if we don't agendize something a certain way, we can't take certain actions. The fact that it says deny the following assessment appeals due to timeliness, do we need to resubmit that and bring it back at a future agenda without that headline? And that way, we can make sure that it's appropriate to move forward? Or can we move forward and just kinda read it differently and just say, review Appeal Number 18-2019? I don't want to make a change on the agenda if I'm not allowed to make a change on the agenda.
This is a point of information assessment.
And your microphone, please.
As a point of information, assessment appeals are not subject to the constraints of the Brown Act. So you may take each of these up and just clarify as you move forward, with the operative information being that the recommendation or the action intended is to deny these appeals.
Okay, thank you very much. Wanted to make sure we were still moving along correctly. So we are looking at reviewing Appeal Number 18-2019, Appeal Number 25-2019, Appeal Numbers 29-2019, 30-2019, and 31-2019. And let's go ahead, Mr. Ford, and start with 18-2019.
So as I said previously, 18-2019, basically, the clerk has noticed the applicant's and contact has been attempted to be made past 8-2019, but that is the latest contact we had with them. We've had no further contact as far as information regarding the property, and so we are looking for this to be denied basically based on no response.
And if denied, then it automatically stays at the $25,000 mark? And do we have any other capabilities? And I'll just be transparent in my thinking here, I think that on a vacant lot of .3 acres in the city of Clear Lake, the $25,000 is a very high value versus what it, in my opinion, what it should be based on my ownership of property in the city of Clear Lake. It just doesn't seem to fit right. Usually, it's about $3,000 to $4,000 per 25 by 50, by 100 lot, and this seems to be a 75 by 100 lot, and just seems a little too high. Wondering, what options do we have? Could we ask for a re-review? Could we offer an amount, deny or approve the appeal? What, Ms. Grant, what are our options here?
Well, I doubt very much that the assessor's office would be prepared to offer evidence, and you don't know that. I'm not real clear on the hearing notice that was sent to the applicant. Is it in the packet?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so the hearing notice was sent, and the applicant did not attend. At this point, if your board wants to be satisfied that that value is appropriate, your board can't take evidence from the assessor. I mean, it's been set for hearing, but it's not technically... Well, actually, it is subject to an appeal because a notice of hearing was sent in the... and the property owner isn't here. That doesn't mean the appeal doesn't necessarily go forward. Your board could ask questions at this point to assure yourselves that the value is appropriate.
Thank you. And I guess I do have a specific question to Mr. Ford. Did you do a second valuation on this property? Or was there not a second valuation due to the timeliness or the last contact?
We did not do a second valuation due to, kind of similar to what you guys described, is we have many things to work on. And if it's not going to get to that point of appeals, we're gonna spend time in their lost response in August 29, 2019. So no, we did not do a second valuation on it.
And would I be correct in assuming that you have not done a second valuation on any of these properties in 8.4 due to that same situation?
You would probably be incorrect on the number 34, which is the 2019, 29, 2019, 30, 2019, and 31, 2019.
Okay, so the last three do have valuations. Okay. My opinion on this matter is if there is an appeal, and we have an appeal hearing today, that not having a secondary value does not provide me enough information to just approve $25,000, which in my opinion is too high for a oversized lot of that size in the city of Clear Lake. And I would love to see a second valuation proposed by the assessor's office just to ensure that we don't put this property in a bad situation of tax default, where they can't afford it, or that it won't sell because the valuation is too high and the taxes are too high. So I'd love to see this one come back with a second valuation. Any further comments or questions, Supervisor Scott?
So I have a question on that, then. But if they filed the appeal, and they didn't follow through and do the paperwork, I don't think we have to go back and lower the amount. They didn't do their due diligence and do what they were supposed to do, correct?
If I could respond to how I noticed them, I noticed all of the appeals via certified mail, and this specific applicant did send back the certified mail slip. So they did receive it.
And Ms. Grant, you had a response as well. Thank you, Johanna.
In the case where the clerk of the board has received evidence that the notification was sent in, and the appellant, in this case, has made no efforts, your board can simply dismiss the appeal and take no action. You don't actually have to affirm the value. You can just dismiss it for failure of the appellant to move forward, and then the assessor's value will be enrolled.
I agree with that.
Any further comments or questions? All right, let's open it up for the public. Any comments from the public on item 18-2019? And hearing and seeing none, bring it back to the board. And I will not be making this motion, so if somebody can... If somebody wants to make it, they can.
Mr. Chair, I move to deny the assessment appeal 18-2019.
Second.
Okay, so Director Simon.
Aye.
Director Scott.
Aye.
Director Pyska.
Yes.
And Director Sabatier.
Nay.
Thank you.
And then we have 25-2019. Mr. Ford?
Okay, so similar to 18-2019, 25-2019, no response. The last contact we had was 12-2019. Johanna could probably speak to how she noticed them.
Yes, so this one, I mailed it out, and it was returned... Well, it was forwarded to a new address, and it wasn't successful there either. So it was returned to sender. And I called the number on the application, and that number had been disconnected. So I tried everything to contact this person.
Thank you very much. Any comments or questions from the board? All right. Anyone from the public have any comments or questions? And bringing it back to the board.
Mr. Chair, I move to deny the assessment appeal 25-2019.
Second.
Okay, Directors.
We have a motion from Supervisor Scott and a second from Supervisor Simon. Johanna, sorry for interrupting, but please roll call.
Sorry about... Director Simon.
Yes.
Director Scott.
Aye.
Director Pyska.
Yes.
And Director Sabatier.
Aye.
Thank you.
Next, we have 21-2019. Mr. Ford?
21-2019, give me one second. You're not at 29-2019?
Sorry, 29-2019. I apologize.
Okay. You threw me off there a second. So 29-2019, 30-2019, and 31-2019 are related, but we'll take each one separately. 29-2019, we spent extensive time at that property, discussed with the representative Russ Hamel on 4-2020. And at this point, his Prop 8 valuation is actually lower than what his application's appeals value or requested opinion of value is. And so at that point, he has basically requested to be denied.
Okay. Any further questions or comments?
Just this one, when you look at the numbers, obviously, 11 million compared to 1 million, just, yeah, big difference there. So...
Very huge difference, for sure. And you said that Mr. Hamel himself requested to deny?
Yes. So we've had a meeting with him, and we visited the property and spent quite a bit of time detailing this. You guys might know the property or not, but it actually is a Conocti.
Yep.
And so we've had to go through and get a very good updated information on our records, all the buildings, conditions of the buildings, conditions of foundations, all that information. So it was very beneficial for our office to update information.
Okay. Any further questions before we open it up for public? Okay, let's go ahead and open it up for the public. Any questions or comments from the public on this item? And bringing it back for board action.
Chair, I will move to deny appeal number 29-2019.
Second.
We have a motion from Supervisor Simon, a second from Supervisor Scott. Johanna, roll call, please.
Okay, Director Simon.
Aye.
Director Scott.
Aye.
Director Pyska.
Yes.
And Director Sabatier.
Aye.
Thank you.
Next, we have 30-2019. Mr. Ford?
So similar description is basically this property is related to the other two properties that are in question. Same scenario, Prop 8 evaluation is actually lower than the applicant's opinion of value, and same concept as we talked to Russell, Russ on 4-2020, and basically about denying it. And he agrees.
Okay. Any comments from the board? Let's go ahead and open it up for the public. Any comments from the public on this item? And let's go ahead and bring it back to the board.
Mr. Chair, I move to deny assessment appeal 30-2019.
Second.
We have a motion from Supervisor Scott, a second from Supervisor Simon. Johanna, roll call, please.
Director Simon.
Aye.
Director Scott.
Aye.
Director Pyska.
Yes.
And Director Sabatier.
Aye.
Thank you.
And last one is 31-2019. Mr. Ford?
Okay, so similar to the last two, 31-2019, their Prop 8 valuation is lower than the applicant's opinion of value. Basically, again, like before, we spoke to Russ in 4-2020.
I'm sorry, I didn't catch that last part of your sentence. You spoke with Russ for 2020, and same thing that he approved to deny?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Basically what I had said.
Any comments or questions from the board? Let's go ahead and open it up to the public. Any comments or questions from the public? And let's bring it back for action.
Chair, I'll move to deny appeal number 31-2019.
Second.
Second.
We have a motion from Supervisor Simon and a close second to Supervisor Pyska. Roll call, please, Johanna.
Okay, Director Simon.
Yes.
Director Scott.
Aye.
Director Pyska.
Yes.
And Director Sabatier.
Aye.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. And that will conclude our 1:30 PM assessment appeals items. And I believe that we are now done, and our meeting will be adjourned at 2:24 PM today.
Thank you very much for the time.
Hold on one second. Did, sir, I'm very sorry. I... We went through all the properties. Which property are you looking at?
32, 33, and 34.
I do not see 32... 32, 33, and 34 were requested for withdrawal. You did not request for withdrawal? Because it's under 8.2. 32-19, 33-2019. Let me just open it up. I have William Turner.
Correct.
Correct? Hmm. And this has a received date of 11-18-2019, so we're still within the right timeline. Ms. Grant, is there anything we can do to not waste this gentleman's time for having come to our meeting today when he is on the meeting agenda? Just not in the correct... Not written correctly for... It says withdrawal.
I'm assuming that the individual did receive notice of a hearing today. Then your board can take the matter up. Since this will be evidentiary in nature, I would suggest you swear the witness is in this gentleman, as well as the assessor recorder's office, if it's just a mistake as to the withdrawal. But they will have to be prepared to discuss value. If the assessor's office isn't prepared to discuss their valuation of the property, at least your board may entertain this individual's statements, and he can make his statements today if your board likes, or you can continue it over to next Tuesday if you like.
Okay. Mr. Ford, there seems to be a little bit of confusion on those three items, 32, 33, and 34. Are you prepared to speak on those items and valuations? Or do you only have the original valuations for those three items?
I, to be perfectly honest, I have a little bit of background, but I'd like to do a little bit more research, so I would like to postpone it to next week if possible.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Schwanger had his hand up in the Zoom.
Oh, I did not... Oh, sorry. You didn't raise your actual virtual hand. You raised your physical hand.
I'm sorry. On this one with Mr. Turner, I believe I talked with Mr. Turner early on on this, and he had sold his aircraft for $55,000. And we use Rule 324 to state the sale price of his property was that for the appeals. I apologize to the board. I thought this was a settled matter. We corrected those values to a sales price as market value. So I do apologize.
Mr. Chair, perhaps the assessor's office can speak with Mr. Turner today to see if it can resolve. And if not, then if next Tuesday is convenient for your board, you may wish to inquire of Mr. Turner if that's also convenient for him. And that will be then an evidentiary hearing, so witnesses will be sworn and evidence will be presented as to value for your board.
Okay. If you have the chance to go up to the second floor and speak with the assessor's office and see if maybe it's already been taken care of?
Right now?
I would say, Mr. Ford and Mr. Schwanger, if you are available right now, Mr. Turner will be coming upstairs momentarily. And I'm getting a nod, so the answer is yes. And hopefully, we do take care of it up there so that you don't have to come back next week. And if you have to come back next week, I apologize for the inconvenience.
Mr. Chair, you may want to set it for a time certain before Mr. Turner leaves, just in case.
Do... I know we wanted to do these at 11:00 in the future, but I don't know what the next week's agenda, off the top of my head, looks like.
Second, Mr. Chair, I do have that. Mr. Chair, I think you could even set it earlier, based on what I'm seeing on next week's agenda. Let's see. At this point, you only have one timed item, and that's tentative. It will be whether or not you desire to have a COVID update next week, and the public health officer is available to do so. And then your untimed items, you have the master fee schedule, and you have a progress report on Middle Creek. So you could set this for 11:00, or you could set it earlier.
Let's go ahead and set it for 11:00, since that's what we had talked about we wanted to do for future ones. And so if it's possible, looking for a motion to continue 32-2019, 33-2019, and 34-2019, if not concluded, with staff to be on next week's agenda at 11:00 AM.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion from Supervisor Simon and a second from Supervisor Scott. Johanna, roll call, please.
Okay, Director Simon.
Yes.
Director Scott.
Aye.
Director Pyska.
Yes.
And Director Sabatier.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, and hopefully, we can help you out on the second floor.
What was the date?
That would be next week, May 25th, at 11:00 AM. And I would say communicate with us if...
Can they clear it up upstairs?
Hopefully, they will. I'm keeping my fingers crossed for you. All right. Thank you very much, and that concludes the rest of our public session.
May 25th, 11:00 AM.
Correct.
If they can, take care of it.
Yes. But hopefully, they will, and please go right up there, second floor, all the way around the hallway.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, everyone. Thank you. Bye-bye.